Good morning, sir.
You all ready?
We are, we have three relatively short items today. We're going to do a quick spin-through of the April 17th agenda. And then Adrian's here to talk about the 2019 county health rankings and then Kate's going to talk about the festival for just a bit. So, the agenda, a week from tomorrow. I think we have a proclamation regarding National Infant Immunization Week. And Kate, is there anything else on the front end that you don't know?
This will be the same week as our latest fire cleanup event. So, I'm going to have Susan and Cindy from Environmental Resources come to know that as well.
Item B is an appointment to the Solid Waste Industry Board. Item C is an appointment to the Plumbing Board, Michael Leese, who's taking Kelsey Leides' place. And Courtney Capello's here if you have any questions about that appointment. And then Commissioner Cruz has an Animal Care Advisory Board appointment on item D. And then items E through M are Commissioner Cruz's appointments to her district advisory board, which takes us through all the preliminary business. And then under new business, we have two main items. One is a project search graduation recognition, which those are always fun to go through. And then items O through R are a series of renewals of corrections grants. And I know Glenda has made, been in some of your office already, given you an update, and I think she's planning to walk the halls, and she's also here today if you have any questions about any of those grants. And that's all of the new business with the exception of bid board. The consent items, there's a change to Sedgwick County Zoo staffing table to meet the needs of the zoo, and Tim can address that if you have any questions.
I've got time scheduled with all of you to come meet with you about that.
And then the CIP amendment for the adult detention facility, what we discussed a week or two ago, the project with second and third floor and the jail expansion is item U. And then two Eastman issues, and that's it for the...
Any questions for you commissioners on any of the items on the agenda?
Adrian, you're up.
Morning, Adrian.
Good morning, commissioners and everyone. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So, the 2019 county health rankings were released a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to take this opportunity to summarize those for you and hopefully make sense of those. Now, the purpose of the health rankings is to help counties understand that many factors influence health. There were 102 counties that were ranked, and Sedgwick County ranked 76 for health outcomes, which measure the length and quality of life, and 87 for health factors that measure issues that can influence those health outcomes. Now, we are ranked with other counties, but the purpose of the health rankings are not to compare ourselves to the other counties. We're being compared to ourselves, how we ranked the previous five years, the previous year. And this data is from 2016, so that's what we are comparing, 16 to 15. And these rankings can vary every year depending upon our own gains and losses, and then other counties' gains and losses can move us up and down that rank. So, what do the health rankings tell us? That where we live matters to our health, and that not everybody has the same opportunity to be healthy. That where we live can influence and does influence how long we live and how well we live. It makes it clear that good health is influenced by many factors beyond medical care, including housing, employment, access to healthy foods, education, and other factors. On this slide, and there are other factors in the full report, but these factors are the ones that have the greatest impact on our ranking. And you'll notice the red minus sign beside each of those. That's not an indicator that we had losses in those areas. It's an indicator that those have the greatest negative impact on our rankings. Adult smoking, the percentage of adults who are current smokers, we remain the same from the previous year of 19 percent of our population. Unemployment, we improved, had a little bit of a gain in that with 4.2 from 4.8 the year before. Violent crime and sexually transmitted infections are two of those measures that helped move us down in the rankings. The number of reported violent crime offenses per 100 for 2015 was 622 per 100,000, but for 16 was 725 per 100,000 population. And sexually transmitted infections, the year before, we had 520 new diagnosed cases per 100,000. And then in 16, the year we're measuring, we had 555. High school graduation remained the same approximately with a 1 percent loss from the year before. Now, the next slide are the health outcomes. And again, these measure the quality and length of life. Again, you'll notice the red minus signs by those, not an indicator of losses in those. Actually, we remain the same in all of those but one. These are just showing us that these have the greatest impact on county's rankings. And these health outcomes, the health factors can vary from county to county. These health outcomes are very similar for every county. So, low birth weight, we remain the same at 8 percent. Poor mental health days, the average number of mental health days, unhealthy days was 3.5. That was the same as the year before. Poor physical health days, the average, 3.2, the same as the year before. Premature death is the one measure that we had losses in. The years of potential life loss before age 75 per 100,000 population, the previous year was approximately 7,600 and almost 8,000 in 2016. And we remain the same for poor or fair health being reported. So, again, the purpose of the health rankings is to help communities understand that many factors influence health. We're aware of these issues in our community. The rankings provide information in a format that can be communicated to a variety of audiences, and this information is intended to support and inform local communities, community efforts to improve health for all. This report also provides opportunities to remind our community and our community partners, which they're aware of, that health is everybody's responsibility. Now, one of the important things is to remember that progress towards health and change takes a long time. It can take a very long time and sometimes incrementally, but the important thing is to take action, and Sedgwick County is taking action on these in a number of ways. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, do you have any suggestions on what else we can do here in Sedgwick County to improve our numbers?
I do. And last year for this year, you approved a health educator. And so, this year, we are gearing up to provide chronic disease self-management and diabetes self-management along with smoking cessation, because when I looked around the county, it was very difficult to find any smoking cessation classes outside of possibly being in treatment for other substances. So, we're going to be starting that. And then I hope to be able to add a health educator to be in the community educating about SDIs. We have staff that test and treat and staff that get with all the primary people and find all the contacts that they've had and hunt them down literally and get them tested and treated, but we need some people in the community to educate. But yes, we have started this year with a health educator, and the goal will be to add more.
Questions from the commissioners?
Can you talk to us about, I'm sorry, about the poor mental health days? Can you elaborate on how, I mean, how do people report those?
Usually through telephone. The state conducts something called Burfus, and I can't remember what that stands for, but they do random calling of the population and ask them about the physically unhealthy days and then the mentally unhealthy days. And so, it's self-report.
Makes me wonder, like, you know, when we think about adding things into our package, you know, if we take a lead on adding a mental health day, you know, I'm going to take a mental health day today. And starting the conversation about how we can be more aware, if we do need a mental health day, and making sure it's okay to tell our staff, if you need to take a mental health day, you have one in your bank. It's just like a sick day, right? Oh, my gosh.
Adrian, just for my background, so, this is 2016 data. Is it always traditionally reported there three years later?
It is, unfortunately. Now, we have more local data ourselves, but the, I think it's the Public Health with Wisconsin and Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that create this report. The data that they're able to get from the federal government is usually a good two years behind. State usually about a year behind.
So, you might have answered it. So, who gathers this data?
Robert Wood Johnson supports the College of Wisconsin of Public Health, and they are the creators of this report and gathering the data.
They do this nationwide?
They do.
Okay.
And one of the reasons I'll say that it's important not to compare ourselves to other counties, for example, is that Johnson County ranked one, ranked one in all of these. Well, when I compared some of our numbers to theirs, they're small percentages, but when you look at a percent with over 500,000 population, that still is a number. But for poor physical health days, for example, the average number of physically unhealthy days reported in the last 30 for adults in Johnson County was 2.3. For Sedgwick County, 3.2. So, you can see why it's important not to compare, because the numbers aren't necessarily huge, like, they had zero and we had three. They had 2.3 and we had 3.2. So, there's some threshold in there that I don't know of, but if you, if I was showing you the health outcome report for Johnson County, all of these would be pluses, that these were things that are adding to their ranking being high because of the quality of life improving. Ours are enough that it's negative. But again, this report is to help inform communities and help us make sure that we're focusing on what we need to be focusing on and looking at any additional interventions that may need to occur.
Other questions?
Along the lines of some of the previous questions, it talks about percent of adults reporting fair or poor health. Is this just, again, based on the telephone discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any, how do we know what their standard of what is considered poor or fair is? I mean, how do we?
Well, that's where it's somewhat subjective, because it is up to the person when they're asked, how many days out of the last 30 would you say you were unhealthy? Then they respond to that question.
Just noticing the top here, and so you said we're not supposed to compare ourselves with other counties, but we do have comparison to the state.
Yes.
I assume that the state numbers, how did the state numbers change this last year? Do we know?
I don't.
I understand.
I don't. I can look that up for you.
I happen to notice you said that the, for example, adult smoking was the same as last year, again, comparing 16 to 15.
Correct.
Right, so not really last year, but, so that didn't change according to this timeframe. And then you said high school graduation was about the same, but you said about maybe a 1 percent loss.
Yes.
So, some of these, you know, are the economy, some of these are based in what schools do and people's willingness to access educational opportunities, you know, coming through the school system. It also mentions here violent crime. I don't know, we have much to do with that, but maybe mental health would be an aspect of that perhaps, but we obviously support public safety in our law enforcement officers and sheriff's department, you know, to whatever degree we need to. And so, I think we're supportive of that. I'm trying to, out of all the things on this list, and in that bottom page there, you said four out of the five were the same. The only one that changed out of those five was the premature death.
Correct.
And do we have any data as to why that change happened?
What all goes into premature death? There are lots of factors that go into that. It can be violent crime, it can be chronic disease, so there's a number of factors that go into that premature death category.
But for us to make use of it, I think we need to understand a little bit about that trend. I mean, that stat by itself doesn't help me. I need to know, we need to know more data as to what caused that. Again, I don't know, you know, since the data is three years old, first of all, I've never really been happy with the lag of data to, you know, decision-making, and the data is generally three years old, so hard to know what we can do to impact something that, you know, something that deals with life loss before age 75 for 100,000 people, and it went from 7,600 to 7,934. We have, we need to know, I guess, the details as to some of the reasons as to why that happened. I mean, if we're going to make policy choices, which is, I think, the point of this report, right? That would be very helpful to have that data. But the smoking cessation, you said you couldn't find, did we not have that, that was moved into the community back in 2016? Is that not still there?
We never did provide smoking cessation when we had the Chronic Disease Risk Reduction Grant for those 20 or 30 years before it was cut. That grant was focusing on community prevention, whether it was in the high schools or looking at smoke-free grounds, that sort of activity. So, it really wasn't focused on individual, it was more population. So, this is the first time that I know of or can remember that we're going to be offering that service.
Okay. And when you mentioned 102 counties, are these 102 counties, Kansas County?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the data for all of them? Is that kind of report we can look at?
Each port can be queried, and so it's, there's not a comparison for all that I know of, but you can go in and put Johnson, Wyandotte, put in, and then each report comes up separately.
I'm curious if there's any correlation between the larger population areas, if they have different trends than maybe more rural areas, or that type of thing. Has that been thought through in terms of, is there any correlations that can be gained by looking at the way that the data would be spread across the state?
I'm not sure, because it really wouldn't change the interventions and what we're doing. And it's similar with it being two-year-old data, that probably not much has changed, and if it has, it's been incremental, which is also positive, but it's not going to stop the interventions that we know that we need to be working on.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for the answers. Appreciate it.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Adrian.
You're welcome.
If there's something we need to do, let us know.
Adrian has some decision packages in the 2020 budget that we'll be looking at and you guys will end up seeing. I think that what's interesting about this is there's a, it shows a connection between economy and mental health and physical health, and so as, however we choose to tackle this, we have to have comprehensive strategic view of this, because they are all interconnected. There's a lot of these part of criminal crime offenses going up that are directly tied to the economy, so.
All of those things in the first picture tied to indicators as well. Very good. Riverfest?
All right. Riverfest this year will be May 31st to June 8th, and Sedgwick County, once again, will be sponsoring that festival. We have a $10,000 sponsorship level. This is consistent with what we've done in previous years, starting with the Sundown Parade on Friday, May 31st. Sedgwick County will have a presence in that parade. We'll have commissioners as they're available, staff, EMS, sheriff, and fire all at the parade. And then we're also sponsoring two care stations. This is something we've done for the past two or three years. There are two, there's one on Douglas Avenue and one near Water Walk, so they're both, they're new to stages. This year, though, we have a new opportunity to staff the Douglas Avenue Care Stations, Wichita Festivals came to us to ask if we would staff the care station on Douglas from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on Friday, May 31st, and then the full week, Monday through Friday, of Riverfest. With that, like many other fairs and festivals, staff will need supervisor approval before they do sign up to work those shifts. Then they'll also have to have a small one-hour training that we will work with Riverfest to provide here during the workday so that they don't, so that staff who are supporting the care stations will not need to miss work or go to a training on a weekend or on an evening. And then they'll also need a button to participate. And then finally, we will have an employee appreciation night. This is different than what we've done in the recent past, where we've only highlighted public safety. Folks, this is going to be something that we're highlighting all employees, and this will be at the food court stage, so it'll be a lot more casual, more low-key. We plan to have some comments from commissioners and then follow up with a video of staff in action. And that's what we're planning for this year's Riverfest. If you have any other questions, happy to answer them.
Questions for Kate? Look forward to Riverfest.
Perfect.
I have a question about open streets. How are we going to participate in the open streets no more on May 5th?
Let me check, and I'll see if we can still get involved in that. Yep.
Commissioner Meister volunteered to participate in egg toss.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You're not amused, Tom?
Nothing about Commissioner Meister would surprise me.
He doesn't know he's volunteered. He's not.
He's only every year.
He done it every year?
Yeah.
Oh.
One year we won it.
Well, good. I'm embarrassed.
That's all we had.
That's all you have? All right. Meister, is there anything else?
I just wanted to say, circling back to the canvassing yesterday, and by the way, appreciate the work that was done by the election office. Again, they do a great job, but I do think we ought to have a discussion about adding that item to our legislative platform. And the item, of course, is if someone has an expired ID, for the purposes of voting, I think that if someone's under age 65, they should be allowed to use an expired ID up to some limit. I mean, if it's 50 years old, I don't think that's going to work, but if it's a year old or whatever the right timeframe would be, as long as it establishes identity, your picture's on there, your information's on there, I don't have a problem with us using an expired ID for someone. We actually, I think, what, three ballots yesterday? Two ballots yesterday, because he used expired ID. That bothers me. We've got to, you know, we're talking about legislative priorities, I think we need to address it. And I don't want to let this one go. We've talked about this for numerous years. This is happening over other elections. I think we need to make a effort not to let this one go. This is probably going to be our next election legislative priority, so.
Mr. Pupun has a note.
That's all I got.
Bring that up.
Let me also say, I did visit the work release, sorry, the jail annex yesterday. I know you visited before they were open and operational, but I was in there, they have about, I think, 180 inmates in the facility, and it was definitely worth my time. I really appreciate what they're doing there. They're doing a really good job, and they have amazing staff. But the facility is really a great change for Sedgwick County, and now they're saying that we're saving about $2 million, maybe more than $2 million a year. So, one of my thoughts would be, with those savings, I'd like to maybe roll that back into other things we could do to help with the criminal justice reform, whether it be more treatment programs. We still have 120 inmates out of county, if we want to talk about maybe adding to that facility, so we can bring those 120 back to Sedgwick County. I'd like to have that discussion at some point. They have plenty of space there on that property to add more, but those 120 out of county are, some of them are an hour away, and it's not good for them and their families. So, we're saving money. The question is, what are we doing with the savings? And rather than just simply pocket that and move it somewhere else, I'd like to have a discussion about rolling that back into finding more efficiencies and improving our service even further. And as far as I know, that conversation's not happening anywhere, but I was extremely impressed with the work release. And commissioners, if you haven't seen it, please, I encourage you to go. I'll be glad to go back again and see it again. They did a tremendous job. They do a great job. And I see Glenda over there, we did the work release facility about a month ago or maybe two months ago now. That also was extremely impressive. So, to the extent there may be a waiting list to get in there, that may be another place to add additional resources, whether it be that facility or another facility like it. That is low-hanging fruit for Sedgwick County. We've got to invest in that type of facility to lower recidivism and to keep people from long distances from Sedgwick County. That money, those things pay for themselves. I strongly believe that. So, I appreciate the tour a couple of months ago at Work Release, and especially the one yesterday at the jail annex, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thanks.
Anything else from commissioners?
So, I appreciate your comments, Jim. I think that, you know, there's a real crisis here as far as mental health goes, and I think instead of adding, you know, let's figure out what the people in our jail need and figure out what this community needs before we start adding more places for people to go. I think that we have a real issue with addiction, with substance abuse. You know, yesterday, we have, you know, just some really disturbing news, I don't know if everyone knows, and it's just, it's heartbreaking what's happening in our community. Women are committing suicide, a 36-year-old woman. So, I think, I think it's all sort of a big picture that plays together, that we have to figure out how to coordinate these services and coordinate our jail and coordinate all of our nonprofits that work together. So, I would have to say that we really need to focus on mental health if we're going to focus on anything.
This is a response. I don't disagree with the effort on mental health. Absolutely agree with that. But the experts in the Work Release Facility and the Jail Annex will tell you, they are doing things for substance abuse and mental health and skills training and GED training and resume training and all that goes. They're doing things, trying to get people back on their feet and transition back into the community in a productive way. Mental health is a certain part of that, absolutely. And they are engaged in that, but listening to the experts in those facilities, they could use more. Again, the Work Release has a waiting line, and they do a great job, but the longer that someone has access to Work Release, the better that transition's going to be. More people have access to it, the better that's going to be. And in terms of the Jail Annex, it's going to pay for itself in less than one year. So, that savings is somewhere in the county's budget. I don't know where it is, but for it to pay for itself in less than one year, to me, just says, we're still spending too much money sending 120 inmates out of county. We're going to continue to incarcerate them in our system somewhere, but rather than doing it an hour away, I'd rather do it closer to home and provide better services. Those efficiencies can be rolled back into programming and mental health services and other things, so. Just, you're providing us some feedback from my experience yesterday. Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you. And I kind of agree with both of you. To some extent, the mental health issue is a problem, and one way that we can reduce the population in our jail is to make sure that we're getting the people the treatment rather than putting them in jail. So, we need to do what we can do to expand our ability to help, and I should say behavioral health, not just mental health. Any other comments or commissioners? Staff, anything for you? Now, staff? Kate?
Oh, I do have one more thing. So, this week is the trash bag handbag event. I have beautiful blue bags, if you guys would like to trade in your purses to carry around all your belongings this week. We're also trying to raise money for just awareness for children who have to move from place to place. I said last week, on average, children move at least eight times in the foster care system, and generally, they only have something like this to carry their belongings. So, if you want to be part of it, I have some here. Do you see how many I have? Means you need one. I'm rocking it, see? And you get a little button so that you can, wherever you are, to discuss what you're doing.
Kate? Question, Commissioner, you got anything?
I do. Pardon me. I'd like to first, I feel like Commissioner Howell said about this, I mean, I think it would be great. The point of having government photo IDs is to confirm that the person who they say they are, whether that ID is expired or not, does not change the fact that they showed all that documentation with that ID instead of changing somebody in for voting from my perspective. And we just add to that, I know we've seen some 21-year-olds who they receive something from the D and D saying they have a grace period to renew that driver's license or date updated, but that grace period does not extend to voting. And so, if they receive something saying, hey, you can wait to renew this, but you go vote with it, it doesn't do you any good. So, that's an area that is also a big concern to me. So, I'd like to say that. Second thing would just be, we are doing some testing to try and figure out how long it's going to take people to pass their ballots for the it's going to take people to cast their ballots for the presidential election. We have programmed a test ballot. If anybody wants to stop by our office, we'd love to time you casting and crack and vote with pretend candidates, there are no real candidates names, and they're all fictitious actually. So just put that little plug in there, just let us know, we'll be happy to sit there and time you on how long it takes you to vote. No pressure, we're just trying to get a good baseline.
Do you know when we're going to sign 129, 130?
I don't yet, no. I'm going to let you guys know as soon as they know.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Madam Register Deeds, we've been advertising your DD 242s. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
I'm good.
You're good. Anyone else have anything today? All right, let's go to work. Thank you all.